All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, October 6th. I am calling this meeting to order at 7:03. Can everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Melissa, will you please call roll? Councilmember Hatfield?
Here.
Councilmember Benish?
Here.
Councilmember Shavelin?
Here.
Councilmember Gra?
Here.
Mayor Hubbard? Here. All right. Sorry, we're starting a couple minutes late. I apologize. We do like to start our meetings promptly on time, but we just had a work session run over just a little bit trying to square it up. But thank you all for being here. And with that, I'd like to adopt the agenda. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Otherwise, entertain a motion for adoption.
Motion to adopt agenda.
Okay, we have a motion from councilmember Hatfield?
Second.
And a second from councilmember Gra. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, agenda is adopted. And then next, we have visitor presentation. We do have one that's on our agenda, but it sounds like there might be another gentleman in the audience here that would like to come forward, and we're going to give you that opportunity. Sheri was gracious enough to let you go first. If you want to state your name and address for our record, and just note that during a visitor's presentation, we can't take any action on any, anything, but we can have a discussion, and we can also kind of give staff direction, so.
Thank you. My name is Ed Driscoll. I live at 2500 Christian Drive. I'm here with my wife, Michelle. We've lived there for about 30 years. We live, we butt up against Highway 41 between Hundred Mark and Pioneer Trail. And we were on the side of the road that did not get a wall, unfortunately, so the noise is greatly amplified on our side. When that work was initially done, the DOT came in and said they spent about a million and a half dollars installing trees and other, and other greenery to mitigate noise and, and light pollution. This summer, that entire strip of, of trees and, and other growth was wiped out. And we'd simply like to understand why in the world, after spending all that money, would it be leveled? And can it be replaced? And at a minimum, can we please get a no engine brake sign on that strip of, of Highway 41? Because the, the Jake Brakes wake up every, every squirrel and baby in the neighborhood when, and it's constant. It's absolutely constant. So those, those are my two questions.
Those are great questions. Maybe I'd lean to you, Matt, to answer the why the removal?
Yeah, I can tell you, we were flabbergasted when, when we saw that it got removed. Whatever type of communication happened at MINDOT between what should have happened and what did happen, didn't happen. And we have been in contact with the people who are in charge of that project, saying that that all needs to be replaced, because it was removed, and that was part of the entire project and part of our approvals. So we've been working with Diane Langenbach at MINDOT, who was in charge of that, to talk about, you know, what, what they're going to do, what time schedule, things like that, to, to put in replacement landscaping. I'm assuming it's going to have to happen next spring, because it's going to be probably too hard to get the landscaping in and get, get it to actually take yet this fall. But I don't know if either of you two have had any other interaction?
You summed it up pretty well there, Matt.
Yeah.
There hasn't been a whole lot of direction given our way yet, other than they're fully aware, obviously, of what they did.
So it was just an oops?
And that we're not happy with it.
It was just a mistake?
Yeah, well, I mean...
It's a million dollar mistake.
Yeah, to me, it's one of the challenges sometimes when you have a large bureaucracy like MINDOT, is that, you know, not, not sometimes the right hand's not talking to the left. So yes, it, it was not something that was supposed to happen, and it took us by surprise as, as much as anybody else. But we are working with them, saying that it does need to get replaced. And we can certainly make the request, too, on the signage for the sign. We don't control the signage on Highway 41, but...
You know who does?
It's probably, MINDOT does.
Okay.
But it's probably a good time to ask them that, just given what's happened, so.
I know sometimes, just in regards to, you know, traffic light timing, that I know you have a contact, maybe there's somebody that, you know, Mr. Driscoll can email in regards to signage, because sometimes it seems like MINDOT is a little...
It'll be better to tie it together with all this stuff.
Okay, because I was saying, sometimes they can have a little more power than...
Yeah, I mean, I can reach out to Diane directly on this. I mean, she wouldn't normally be the person in charge of this, but I don't think they feel terribly great about what happened. And so this might be a good opportunity to ask that question.
Great. And I'm here representing my neighborhood.
Yep.
So I'll try to hold back the pitchforks and the torches.
Well, I, I really do appreciate you taking the time to come forward. I know sometimes when you're, you know, in front of cameras and it's in front of other people, it can be a little bit intimidating. And it's, obviously, it's an evening that you could have been spending doing something else, so. But I really do want to thank you for coming down here and bringing this to our attention, and we'll make sure that, you know, we get the wheels moving and, for you.
Much appreciated.
Yeah. Thank you. Enjoy your night. All right. That brings us to our other visitor presentation I know I have on the agenda here. So I have Sheri Myers and the Brandon Dale Residents Association. So again, I know I stated your name, but go ahead and state your name and address for the record, and then get started.
Sheri Myers, I'm at 39 Dawnview Drive, and I'm over in Brandon Dale, the manufactured home park here in town. And I'm an organizing leader building the Brandon Dale Residents Association. I'm here to challenge everyone to consider us as the canary in the coal mines for what's now starting to happen for all Chaska residents, Minnesotans, and Americans. If you stick with me, you'll understand why I say that soon. First, a quote I'd like you to consider. It starts with a two-way street of respect. And really, I think we have to recognize that we cannot, I don't think anyone wants a kind of, quote, trailer park. I don't think anyone really wants that. The city doesn't want it, the administrators don't want it, politicians don't want it. The neighbors across the street don't want it. I don't think investors want it, and I don't think our residents want it. We are going to do our level best as operators to reinvigorate these communities, unquote. That was said by Robbie Pratt, the CEO and co-founder of Haven Park Capital Investments, doing business as Haven Park Communities, in a HousingWire interview in July of 2023. Robbie is a Saudi Arabian-born LDS Mormon, Mexican Olympic pole vaulter, who was a corporate strategist before founding Haven Park. His co-founder was his father-in-law, Jay Anthony Antonelli, a Canadian immigrant LDS Mormon Zionist, who proudly helped build both the New Skin and Cutco multi-level marketing pyramid schemes, per his 2024 obituary. In the same interview, Robbie continues, quote, "We constantly remind our residents of that. Look, we're going to make some improvements here. We're going to have to recoup some of these costs in terms of, you know, kind of moving these rents. You know, we try to do it in a moderated way, but you are going to see some increase to rents. There's a value of, or there's a transfer of value to you when it comes time for you to move out of this community or sell your home," unquote. In May of 2021, we were notified after the fact that Haven Park Communities had purchased Brandon Dale without any chance for residents to buy the park. We now know they blindly offered $40 million for property valued at only $24.2 million. Why would they do that? Well, they didn't really pay $40 million. They used Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac taxpayer money to buy the manufactured home parks they own. Between 2024 and 2022, three of the largest, five, or the five largest private equity firms and similar smaller firms, using investments from around the globe and money they took from us taxpayers, gobbled up the manufactured home park market to the tune of an estimated 800,000 homes across thousands of parks. Robbie says no one wants our neighborhoods to exist because they're not quality. So why is he buying them? In a Fannie Mae brochure from 2019, five years after founding Haven Park Capital Investments, Robbie has quoted, quote, "We used the Fannie Mae credit facility to acquire over 100 million in assets last year. The credit facility gives us the agility we need to execute on our acquisition strategy upfront. We're providing long-term stability as well as strategic flexibility as we operate our properties over the long haul. Whether it is unlocking trapped value, asset disposition, property replacement, or new acquisitions, the Fannie Mae Credit Facility product does it all. It is truly a remarkable product backed by a fantastic scene, team that has supercharged our asset acquisitions and portfolio optimization," unquote. Curly Haven Park is on a whole new level. They've considered one, they're considered one of the most aggressive firms in manufactured home park acquisitions. Founded in 2014, they currently own 80-plus communities with 22,000 homes. As a privately owned company, their profits and revenue are kept secret. But after increasing lot rent more than 60% to over $700 for grandfathered residents, enter to new residents nearly $1,100, plus asking rental prices of $1,700 to $2,100 per month if you can't afford to buy, they're yanking over $4 million out of Minnesota from Brandon Dale alone in 2025. This is double the revenue the previous owners made five years ago. $1,100 per month may sound for, sound like affordable rent for only a tiny plot of land before mortgage costs, and may sound affordable to the wealthy. But it isn't affordable for the thousands of low-income workers, young families, retirees, disabled people, immigrants, and single people who reside in Brandon Dale. Yet for all their claims about using their revenue to reinvigorate parks and transferring value in home equity upon sale of our homes, there are endless stories from individuals and news stories from multiple states about how Haven Park is harming residents and squeezing the most vulnerable homeowners for every dime of profit possible. I'm one of those with a story to tell. Going back to the July 2023 interview, Robbie said, quote, "Our mission is to provide attainable housing for, we call it, responsible residents across America. We feel like we try to be responsible, conscious, you know, concerned operators that are doing the right thing. And we expect our residents to do the same. They want to see some discipline. They want to see some enforced rules. They want to see some improvements. And you find that in most cases, they see how that will help the value of their home," unquote. Robbie's Freudian slip of saying conscious rather than conscientious reminds me of what quality Robbie allows in Brandon Dale. As in the movie Clueless, Haven Park is a Monet. From far away, it's okay, but of course, it's a big old mess. While lawmakers, investors, and middle-class neighbors hear the glowing words, residents instead face a big old mess. In Brandon Dale, like other Haven Park-owned parks, we have long-dead and diseased trees everywhere, utility infrastructure that fails frequently, leading to multiple power outages and dozens of water outages every year. Many streetlights don't work with stories about drivers nearly running over pedestrians. Roads Haven Park replaced started crumbling only months after being laid, and more. Every one of these issues puts Chaska Police, fire, ambulance crews, visitors, and residents at risk every time they enter the land that Haven Park now owns. However, since the area between Brandon Dale and nearby middle-class subdivisions is only a few dying tree-filled yards away, their lack of maintenance could easily damage or destroy neighborhoods that Haven Park doesn't own. We also have no adequate storm shelters, as the only shelters are cement-block garages under homes built in the 1960s to 1970s, before the 1976 HUD regulations. And many garages are crumbling or collapsing. The garages are 100% owned by the park owners, yet Haven Park refuses to maintain them and has threatened to allow houses to crash to the ground, to then blame and evict the homeowners for it. I ask our city council, does this sound like the two-way street of respect that Robbie says they have with us? For myself, I sued Haven Park for a threat to life and limb on my lot after they ignored my pleas to fix it. The judge scolded them a year and a half later, when the work was finally complete, and they demonstrably lied repeatedly to her for not fixing it immediately. I endured harassment and threats the entire time over what would have been a $3,400 repair if done immediately. I know I haven't felt any of this two-way, uh, street of respect that Robbie mentioned. The experiences of Brandon Dale residents are far from unique, as we are working with dozens of parks to defend our right to exist and stay in our homes. We've done the research and know what horrific measures Haven Park and private equity firms will do to make a buck. Everyone here, whether in a park or not, should read our Minnesota bill, the Manufactured Housing Bill of Rights HF2381 and SF2691, and tell their Minnesota State Representatives and state senators to support it. Not just to save our homes, but because we are a canary in the coal mine of what's coming for you. When our rents grow up, that's money we can't spend at your small businesses. When we can't afford to maintain our homes and the owners refuse to maintain the property, the damage is spread beyond the edges of the park to your homes. When we lose our homes, we're forced to move either into a big city or far into rural areas that are more affordable, so you lose workers and customers and neighbors. So is Robbie right that most people no longer want manufactured homes to exist as affordable housing? When hyperinflation, the sign of a failed economy caused by private equity, leads you to downsize, will you be happy on a tiny rented lot in a $150,000 home you can only buy with cash upfront because no lenders are approving mortgages for those buying a manufactured home with an $1,100 a month lot rent before utilities and insurance and maintenance costs? Manufactured homes older than 10 years, which most homes in most parks are, can't be moved. Even those that can be moved cost $15,000 to move if you can first find land to put it on. When you can no longer afford these rent increases and try to sell, private equity owners can refuse any buyer from renting the lot, then repossess your home within a matter of weeks. So you lose out on Robbie's fantasy of increasing home values. This is why they are raising the lot rents so high, to evict those who need affordable housing in hopes the middle class will move here when private equity firms make it unaffordable for you to live elsewhere. This is because private equity firms are also buying up childcare, childcare centers, long-term care facilities, for-profit hospitals and clinics, manufacturing skilled trades, software and technology, including data collection, travel and leisure, pet care, financial services, banks, transportation and logistics, and every other sector of American life. They're required by law to provide an ever-increasing return on investment for their shareholders, the incestuous cross-pollination of wealthy people who sit on the boards of each other's companies. This isn't a left versus right issue. This is all of us versus the Epstein class. The Haven Park Capital Investments website in 2017 had this to say about their approach, quote, "Our fund invests in stable, high-flowing manufactured home communities that provide a generous, dependable investor yield while steadily growing investor capital," unquote. I call upon our mayor, mayor and city council, everyone here, every Minnesota mayor and city administrator, every lawmaker and policy writer, and every person of good conscience who believes the Epstein class is destroying the economy and harming those of us with sweat and blood equity, to support us and support our bill at the Minnesota Capitol. See that the manufactured home parks are a unique melting pot of every type of hard-working people, the same as your neighborhood and city. Then heed the call from the last canaries in the coal mine. We need your support to stay in our homes so we can stay your neighbors, workers, customers, and friends." Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Sheri, for being here. And thank you for, one, bringing this to my attention back earlier this summer. We've been working with you, along with some of your neighbors, in regards to certain aspects. And I appreciate your advocacy and tireless effort towards this. And trust me, I'm just as frustrated and bewildered. But I also know that I, I can't sit up here and say that I can truly relate when I'm not living in your neighborhood and I'm not facing the anxiety and fear that you, as homeowners, are facing by living in that neighborhood. But I'm an advocate and a friend, and I'm here to help. I would like to say that I know when I saw you were on the agenda, I spoke with Matt, and he has an update.
Yep.
Uh, so I'd like to turn the floor over to him so he can give you the update.
Yeah, so one of the things, well, first of all, I mean, it, I definitely hear what you're saying. I mean, that's, it's something that we're seeing as a, as a community. But we're not the only community that's seeing this. There's a number of other cities throughout the state who have had, not just Haven Park, but there's a couple other larger private equity firms who have come in and purchased these parks, see similar issues. So what, what we did is we worked with Isaiah, who you guys got us in contact with, and we coordinated a meeting where we brought together, it was about 15 cities, last week. And really, the, the point of that meeting was just to sort of get everybody up to speed, educate them on what's going on, talk about the issues that the different communities are seeing, and then start to talk about how do we start getting to a solution. We certainly have seen the, the Bill of Rights and working with that. One of the things I think that really struck us as, it was basically city administrators and community development directors that were in the room, is how little, how little, how few rights we have as a city to be able to go in and do some of the similar things that we do. Like, for instance, we have a rental, rental license process. And so that means that we, we go into every rental property in the entire community, we inspect it to make sure it's meeting certain standards. You know, we do all this before the person renting the property is able to actually go off and rent it. We don't have those same abilities to do that in mobile home parks because their homeowner is...
They're privately owned.
They're privately owned. So what we talked about is, you know, there, you know, the discussion started around talking about, are there state solutions to this? And I get, well, you just got done hearing me talk about MINDOT just, just a few minutes ago. All of us as cities would prefer, if the state would delegate some of that authority to the cities to be able to do that, because then we can take that on and make that a priority ourselves, instead of having to go through the bureaucracy of, of having to, to work at the, the state level. To that extent, there was one other group, and I can't remember, remember their name, but they actually office right next to Isaiah, who was also in the meeting, had some really good ideas to bring up. We created a working group that basically is a subset of the people of the administrators and community development directors that were there last week, that we're going to get together. In fact, I'm looking at the dates right now that they're looking at trying to get the next meeting set up. The whole goal would be to have something prepared for the legislative session coming up this year, and talking about what we think as communities, you know, what we're hearing and what we think could be effective ways to address some of these issues that are popping up. So I don't have all the answers yet. I will have, keep you informed, sort of, of where that discussion goes. But know that there was plenty of communities, cities that were saying exactly the same thing that you've been telling me. And, and quite frankly, that we've been experiencing as an organization, too, because, you know, we had some, you know, we, we've had significant issues with what we've seen with utility bills. We've had significant issues with, there was a time period where we couldn't even get our fire truck into the park because of the bridge not being structurally, it was structurally substandard. We did get them to complete fixing that, but until that point, we had to, any entrance into there, we had to go through a sort of emergency...
Backway.
Backway, which was not a good way for us to get our truck into the park. So we've experienced things, too, within our organization that have been pretty frustrating. And I can tell you, you know, our water and sewer superintendent, Matt Hafner, has been really upset because, you know, when was the last time you ever had your water shut off? I mean, and if it is, it's for a very, very short period of time.
And you know about it ahead of time.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate that all of you have experienced all these emergency shut-offs that disrupt your utilities and disrupt your life. that disrupt your utilities and disrupt your life. And then there are a lot of times that's out ba- based on what you had given me as dates. Some of them were very, um, inopportune times where, you know, they're extremely cold outside. And no one deserves to live like that. So.
I think we, as a council, will definitely advocate and work with Matt to help on any of this because you are a big part of our community. I mean, that's a lot of land right there. I myself look across the canyon to you guys and I've never thought anything, you know, negative about it. It's a, it's a great starter community. It's a great community in general. So I think bringing this to our attention and, and, um, letting us know what is happening is definitely, gives us the reason to stand behind Matt and some of these other conversations happening. Um, but I also want to congratulate you on coming up to feel comfortable enough to share what's going on. Because sometimes, you know, we don't want to let people know the problems that are going on in our neighborhood because you might think other than good about us or something. So this is really helpful for us to know some of the things that we may see on our own. It's not because you guys are not taking care of your home, but more the, you know, property owner itself is not doing what they should.
I know the wheels move slow. I know it's frustrating. And I am a person of action. I'm a get-it-done girl. And I want to make it done, but sometimes it moves a little slow when we're dealing with governmental and state and private equity firms. But just know that I'm gonna push that ball uphill.
Well, and it's gonna take advocacy because the parks have had, uh, very strong lobbying group behind them. So, I mean, it's gonna take advocacy from communities. Um, you know, it's gonna take us talking with our state legislators, uh, to, to talk to them about the, the significance of the issue.
Well, and you spoke to, and I, I know we met in person and then we, there was some correspondence via email and everything, but you had an opportunity to meet with somebody in the attorney general's office.
Yeah.
And I don't know, ma- I mean.
It, yeah, so we talked with the attorney general's office.
For some of the homeowners that aren't, because there's obviously more homeowners here, you know, tonight than there was at that meeting, but.
I, 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 there's a part of me that sort of understands some of the, the, the place that the attorney general's office is putting, because there's not very many laws that they're able to, to use to protect. And so that's why they're trying to support this too. They understand the issue. They understand the frustration. Um, I, I think they feel a little, uh, I think they feel bad and maybe a little inept to be able to address the issue because they're not real- they don't have the tools.
Right.
Uh, to deal with it. So that's, that's where I think sort of this, you know, looking at this from a legislative perspective, I mean, it's needed to be able to, you know, ha- have people like the attorney general's office be able to take action.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, they need to have something to.
Yeah, and I mean, what they've done, and I've shared it with, with people here, is that, you know, they want people to come together like this and sort of, uh, list down or list out what are the major issues that, that are, you know, that they're experiencing, both to see, is there things that fall under current laws?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but also because from an advocacy role for themselves, that they need to know exactly what the issues are.
Yeah.
And how widespread those issues are.
Yeah, and I think you guys have done the hard work. You're here and you're collectively here as a group advocating for the same thing. And sometimes that can be the biggest challenge to overcome. But you, you've built your network and you're gonna continue to keep pushing that forward. And I think if we're all pushing it on different fronts, there's gonna be a momentum and there's gonna be movement. And what I will do in this elected leader role is, you know, talk to Matt as far as the other communities, where they were standing, and I will talk to those other elected leaders and, you know, together as a separate entity and group, you know, keep pushing that forward as well.
We're absolutely grateful for all your efforts. We know you guys are a partner with us. And that's why we keep fighting and because we know we have the support of the city and that you want us here despite what Robbie seems to think.
We do want you here.
Yeah, we do want you here.
We are so grateful.
One of our, I mean, and this, you know, this is for everybody sitting here that, you know, we have strategic goals up here as a council that are a shared goal. And our number one goal is that Chaska is a welcoming community for all, and that means everybody. And I want to make sure that every single person sincerely knows that that is an important aspect that is in the mindset of everything that we do that drives toward in this community.
And I hopefully speak for the rest of us that we know, we feel that, we feel your support. We make sure people understand that the beef isn't with you.
I know, and it feels, if, it's ju- yeah, it's so frustrating because you feel almost as helpless. But I will tell you that, you know, we've been in communications with some of the management in regards to the park and if there is ever something that needs to be frustrated or elevated, I mean, reach out to me. I'm available, you know, email me, um, thubbard@chaska mn.gov. Two Bs on the hubbard.
On the website.
It's on the website. Um, I'm, you know, I'm here. I'm here to help. Um, I may not be able to fix everything, but I will, I will try, you know, I will, I will sincerely try.
And we're gonna hold you to it. We've got, we will be reaching out soon with the next step that we want you to help participate in. So.
Well, I look forward to seeing what happens.
I do think it helps though to have multiple cities involved in this discussion.
Yeah.
I, I, it's, uh, I mean, I, I found it, uh, pretty amazing to see how many people actually, I mean, I sort of, I sort of set up the meeting and I, I sent it out to a bunch of people. And I, I honestly didn't know how many people were going to RSVP, but almost everybody RSVP'd and, and practically everybody came, which led me to believe that this is, and they said it.
The pressing issue.
That this is a pressing issue in their community too.
Yeah, and so that, I mean, that's huge momentum and that will help.
Is there any, I mean, we can't tell private property owners to do much in this city because it's private property. But when it becomes an issue for like water turn-off or things like that, is there any, you know, muscle we have?
Yes and no.
No?
Um, the, you know, the, the one, and we've tried to use this to, to the maximum extent. The, the one area that the state gives us a little bit more latitude in is in fire protection. And so when it comes to like not having utilities available, um, like we can't show up to fire and go to hook up to a hydrant and then all of a sudden that hydrant's dry.
Yeah.
And so some of the things that we've had to make sure that they're very clear on is that we have clear access into that park, but also that if, you know, we need to know if these utilities aren't on because if they aren't, then we need to bring our tanker truck. Um, so there's, you know, significant safety issues that we get concerned about with stuff like that. So we've tried to use, uh, some of the, the authority that we have from a fire safety perspective, but it, that's about as far as we've had, been able to have the reach.
I mean, I know it makes sense, but.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to ask a question.
Yeah.
But that's definitely why we're putting the call out. We're asking cities, city administrators, mayors, city councils, and just regular everyday people, support our bill, talk to your lawmakers, help them understand that this doesn't just benefit us. It benefits everybody. It benefits the entire community. If we're gone, you lose workers, you lose customers, you lose your friends. So we want to be here and we are so grateful to have you guys here. And thank you so much for letting us come and, and help remind you where we're at.
I guess I would add, when you write to Taylor, you're in my ward. I literally live on the other side of the canyon from you. So if there's things that I can do to help you out, let me know.
Yeah, this is your council representative.
Yeah, I am your council representative.
Um, but yeah, so you definitely.
Reach out to me.
Yeah, reach out to both. Happy to.
Yeah, and we'll ha- we're happy to show anyone in the council around the, around the park sometime if you'd like.
Yeah.
Um, let you see how bad it is. Right now, we'd like you to come at night so you can see we are missing a lot of streetlights, which makes it dangerous. So we are happy.
My concern is the safety of all of us here. I mean, between streetlights and, um, all the trees that need to be, I mean, we can't afford all these trees that are hanging over our houses and all the people, you know, who are here. I mean, that's safety, isn't that our number one concern? And they don't give a rat's butt, you know? I mean, we've been, I live on Timothy Lane and I finally got trying, we are trying really hard to get rid of the drug dealers that are just reusing down from us and we can't get rid of them. We keep calling and calling and calling, you know? My grandkids don't come outside. I just, we have newborn, you know, parents just live right at the house from them and we can't get rid of them because Haven Park tells us, "Well, just call cops, call cops." Well, how many times can we call cops when nothing can be done?
You should always call the police every single time.
I mean, there's at nights, they come right through our house, guns blazing, and guess what happens? There's nothing they can do about it. You know, it's just, it just, it's getting tiresome. It really is. Because what's the point in, when a tree falls on her house and destroys her house and she doesn't have insurance on her house? Whose fault is that? You know, that's our concern just from here. I get the water utility, yeah, that makes everyone torqued up because it's been rolled three, four times out of the hole a week. And it's like, well, I get home from a hard day's work like everyone else here at 5:00 and we don't have water. You know, it's, it's, it's getting ridiculous and it's just getting frustrating. Because we can't afford anything outside of Brandonale. I mean, you go to the new, brand-new apartments, they're three, four hun- you know, $1,400. You know, we like our little, our little hideaway, but this is saving, it's big time. We can't, where's the front end of our Brandonale? You know, pretty soon I'm, I'm gonna have to go to the dollar store to buy, you know, lights to go all the way up. You know, and that's how bad it gets, you know? I, I will say, I almost hit a pedestrian the other night. I almost crapped my pants, you know? It just, it's, it's ridiculous.
And if someone is hit because we can't see them because we don't have working streetlights, that means Chaska resources are being used because of the neglect of the owners. We cannot avoid everyone, especially with the way the roads bounce you around. Sometimes I've had to turn on my brights to be able to see coming in. We've had mo- I've heard multiple times of people who have barely missed hitting a pedestrian, walking in the park, coming into the park because we don't have lights. So they, this is corporate socialism using the city, county, state resources to fill in for them the same way they use taxpayer money to buy the park. At some point, we need the entire population to start saying, "This is not okay." Start getting people to call your state representative, your state senator, and say, "This is not okay." What if I am the person that's happening to go in there to visit someone? What if it's my kid trying to visit their friend and his person doesn't see them and they get hit?
You guys, are you readily able to reach out to someone from Haven Park and let? And I only ask this because when I was door knocking and putting signs, I wanted to see if there was a night to unite, you know, neighborhood party that I could visit and ask if some of you would put signs in your yard. And I was not welcomed into the community. So it was very hard to find him and then he said, "Unfortunately, we don't allow signage and this and that." And so I moved on, but.
There is a limit on signage, but, um, we can put, there is just a limit on it. So you and I can talk about that later. But, um, there is a 24-hour maintenance line.
Okay.
That gets sent to the park and then maybe he'll get to it the next day. Maybe.
So it's not really 24 hours. Just leave a message and I'll get back to you when I can.
Yeah, and considering the amount of issues we have, the amount of trees, for instance, that are dead or dying, one of these days it's gonna fall on a house and it's gonna take out that house. And what happens then? A fire. What happens with that fire? Well, the tree's probably gonna pull out water lines, so they're gonna pro- pull up, put off our water again. And how quickly will that spread? So we aren't just doing it for us. We are saying this protects the whole community. It protects the people, not the rich, and that's what we're fighting.
Yeah, Matt, we, I can't remember, did we talk to them about tree stock or anything along those lines with them? Is that something that maybe we can circle back to with them?
I mean, I feel like that's kind of a.
It might be due for an update time and find out. I know they gave us an update of, they've been relo- they've been locating your water valve shut-offs. And they, they, I did hear that they fixed the repair of the water main braid.
That's one of the excuses for raising the rent.
Mm-hmm.
And they fixed the water that they bought with their property.
And, and know that when we, when we have these discussions with them, that is always in the back of my mind. I don't want to do anything that's, I want to advocate for you for, for better living conditions, but I don't want to do anything that's gonna financially hurt you.
But keep in mind, they don't care about how you're doing it. They're gonna raise that rent no matter what. They made that pretty clear.
Yeah.
And, um, like with, in my case, when I sued them, it was a $3,400 fix that it costed them a $1,600 doing it wrong. Thirty-four, and then $3,800 because they waited so long to do it right. And all the lawyer fees for a year and a half court case. And even the judge was flappergasted by the end. Why didn't you just fix it right off the bat? Because this is not how private equity works. Private equity works on squeezing the little people. They don't care how much money they spend. They'll squeeze it out of us and they will find an excuse. No matter what, they will find the excuse. And what we're hearing is right now, we're go- for October, we went up to rents over $700. Everyone paying different amounts, which is not supposed to be kosher. But new people coming into the park in the last five, in the last several years, they're paying $1,095 per month for lot rent for a tiny little piece of land. That's it. We cannot get mortgages. We cannot sell our houses. They then take your house. All of this is in service to their God money. This is not okay. And this is why we're fighting back because they're not just doing it in parks. Like I said, they're doing it in every single facet of American society. Every single area of business, they're doing the same. They are draining money out of our economy into their pocketbooks. And if you look, a lot of, how many of these owners are using taxpayer money? And they're coming from other countries and coming here. And hey, we have no problem with immigrants, but if you're gonna come here and you are going to drag money out of the economy into your pocketbooks, this should not be okay. We need to send that message. And we start by telling lawmakers at all levels, you cannot let them get away with it anymore. And if you are going to participate in taking the money out of our pockets and giving it to these people, then you are not gonna get our votes ever again. Doesn't matter what side. That is how we mo- start moving the bar.
So to kind of refocus and kind of create a plan of action, um, it sounds like you're, you're continuing a work group. We'll follow up in regards to the tree utilities or the, sorry, the trees and the streetlights. Kind of combined the two things in my head. Um, I haven't had dinner. Uh, and, um, and you, like, if there is incidents, please feel free to move forward and reach out. And it sounds like the end goal is to have legislation that is something that we can advocate behind. So, um, that's what I've kind of taken out of this conversation. If there is anything that was, I've, I've missed from our time together, don't hesitate to, to let me know. But I think, I think we have, and again, I know the wheels move slow. I wish I could make them move faster. I can't, but I can tell you that they still move. And it will make an effort and get things done, so.
And we are very grateful. Thank you for the time.
Yeah, and I, again, sincerely appreciate every single one of you for taking your time out of this evening. I'm sure that there are way more cooler and better things that you could be doing with a Monday night rather than, you know, hanging out here with us. But it means so much to see that you guys have co- have collected effort and that you, you have a leader that is, you know, speaking.
Passionate.
Passionate and that you guys have the collaborative support of each other. So, thank you. Thank you for showing up this evening and making your voices heard.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll roll and have my supper.
Enjoy your supper. I have, like, lived vicariously through you.
I was gonna say, we were all here at 5:00.
I was chopping vegetables and I ran out of time and I was like, no, no dinner for me. Thanks. I was, oh, one of you has left your keys on the floor.
I wouldn't get too far.
Okay, I just don't. I know I was supposed to make a stir fry and I was obviously too slow cleaning the vegetables for myself, but. Okay, um, moving along, does, is anybody else here for a visitor presentation that we missed? Okay, um, all right, well, that moves us. Okay. Um, all right. Well, that moves us along to consent items. Consent items are items on our agenda that receive little to no discussion, although we can certainly pull an item off the agenda, have a larger discussion about it. Or if anybody just has any questions or um, comments, we can um, move forward and let that be known at this time as well. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve our consent items.
I was just gonna say one quick thing. Um, on the consent items is a resolution supporting suburban, suburban transit providers. Um, and I just wanted to make sure and draw attention to that. Um, cause there is some desire to get rid of uh, the opt-outs or the suburban transits, which would be Southwest Transit. And then um, there's some other communities that have also opted out. Um, and obviously that's something we care deeply about. If you're watching and you don't know, Chaska is a part of a joint powers agreement um, with Eden Prairie and Chan Hassen to have our own, um, our own transit. And that was done many, many years ago when there was really a need identified. Um, if we didn't have Southwest Transit, that, you know, maybe one or two buses would come out um, this way a day and bring people into the city. And that is really, would be the primary goal is to bring people into downtown and, and not a lot of focus on anything else. We certainly wouldn't have the micro transit. Um, we wouldn't have uh, you know, the trolley bringing people to and from River City Days. All of those things wouldn't be happening. Um, and the rides to, like, one of the big ones I think about is um, when our schools go to state for championships and the ability to bring in six big buses and get everyone down to see that happen and how much of a community builder that is. Um, so it's just really important. I think this is another one where, similar to what we just heard, where we talk to our legislators and say, we're not okay with that. I think some common misconceptions is, you know, well, if my taxes go down, if suburb, or if suburban transit goes away, Southwest Transit goes away, I have less taxes. That's a really, really common misconception. That's not true. It's not how it works. Um, it'll just go elsewhere to Metro Transit. Which Metro Transit isn't a bad thing. I don't wanna, don't get it skewed. But um, having our own transportation, having competition in the Twin Cities for transit, we are so lucky in Tw- Twin Cities to have the transportation we do. For the size city we are, to have the different options we have, that wouldn't happen if not for the competition that's been created um, by having opt-outs and having different operators to, you know, drive things like micro transit. Those prime buses you see everywhere that are, they're not just for fun. Those, those prime vehicles are getting people to work. They're getting people to grocery. They're getting people to medical appointments. It's not just some flashy nice thing we have. It's, it's a need people have. Um, and so we wouldn't have any, like, micro transit. That was really born out of some, some competition of saying, how can we do something different? How can we get people around? How can we do more than just getting people downtown and back? And how can we actually create a space where there is, people can move? Um, and really, transportation is so important to addressing things like affordability and addressing things like um, hunger. All of those things, when you can get people to food, or you can get people to resources, those things get addressed. And without transportation, you can't do that. So I'm just really urging everyone, I'm glad as a city we're adopting this. Um, the city of Chan Hassen did it at their last meeting. I expect Eden Prairie is probably doing it um, also. And, or I know they are, but um, I don't know which night it's happening. So um, but definitely talk to your legislators, uh, legislaters, there we go, um, and say, this is not something you want. Um, you don't want these opt-outs eliminated. It would be, um, it would, it would be so harmful to our community. I can't even imagine. So.
Can we put a link on our, on the website or something of directly to the legislator to, you know, say like, we don't support, or we want the opt-out?
I think that might be something we work with. Cause, so with how it kind of works with Southwest Transit is there's two of us. Um, so two, basically two people from each city and then a member at large. And that member at large kind of moves around. So it was, it was Chaska for a long time with Bob Repke representing us. And now it's moved to Eden Prairie and they have a representative. It'll eventually go back to Chan Hassen. So we kind of rotate roles and responsibilities. Um, so with our, our board, I expect um, that we'll probably be looking at, you know, what can we do? And, you know, right now, this is just kind of like a, it's a few legislators saying, we'd like to do this. It's a few voices saying this. And so as it could become more real, I think we'd see more things like that, but.
Yeah, that'd be good. Cause I know when the private schools, when the state was gonna cut transportation for private schools, they all emailed Lucy Ream to all of us and just said, start flooding her with, you want transportation. I don't think there was a single parent that didn't send a note. So if there's a way we can all get behind you and we should post that on our website or.
I was just gonna say, are we talking about emailing like our representative Lucy Ream and our state senator Julia Coleman? Are, are those the representatives you want us to, as citizens to reach out to?
And I think as it materializes, that might make, you know, more, drive more of who we need to talk to.
Okay.
As it materializes of where it goes.
Yeah. No, I mean, I think, I just think like pointing in the direction. And I agree. I think it's very well said. I don't, I mean, I don't know if anybody wants to add anything. But I think just, you don't know what you're gonna miss until it's gone. And I think sometimes when the um, Met Council with uh, Metro Transit, they really look at different parameters that guide their ridership. And we don't, you know, as suburban transit provider, they look at different metrics that help better serve our individual community. And that we, as individuals that pay, you know, part of our sales tax and part of taxes, we, we provide money for these services. We wanna see those dollars being reinvested in our community. That's very important.
Like Michaela said, it's ease of access. So whether you're talking about healthcare being available, groceries being, you know, whatever, ease of access is getting people to those things or getting people to their jobs downtown or, you know, events like you were talking about. So that ease of access is something we don't wanna take for granted because two buses a day like you were talking about from, you know, whatever it is, is not gonna do it.
Yeah. And it's not just jobs downtown. I mean, Prime specifically, that's getting people to work at Target so they can shop for your groceries that you drive up.
That's the ease of access to healthcare and grocery.
Yeah. That's for, you know, the nurse that's working at Lakeview and needs, doesn't have a vehicle right now, but needs to get to work. Like, that's where it is. And it's mostly funded by regional sales tax and motor vehicle sales tax. So when I say a common misconception is that you get rid of it and the tax goes away. No, it just goes, it just goes somewhere else. It just gets relocated. And so part of being an opt-out is saying, we contribute to this, we should be getting equal access. There should be an equality to transportation. And that's really what we're saying. And um, and I, yeah.
Well, and equity in part of it too. You know, that we get our population size is much different from the metropolitan area. But that doesn't mean that there are different needs in our community that there are downtown. People still need access to reliable transportation. End of story.
Yeah. And I think there's, you know, some, there's more misconceptions that I could probably spend hours talking about. And you'll probably see articles at some points. I wanna say what I know for us, and that's with Southwest Transit, is that we try to be very fiscally responsible with our dollars. Um, you know, we've been able to do some cool things. And this is years ago. This was before any of us were sitting up here with like real estate and things so that we would have dollars to be able to reinvest and maybe have nicer buses or put wifi on buses or do things like diversify and have micro transit or, um, you know, those different things. Those are all really fueled by innovation um, and smart spending. So I can't speak for all the suburban transit agencies, but I can say for Southwest Transit, that's something mindful of. When we set our goals for our CEO this year, and I was one that pushed really hard on this, and I think council member Grau could, could state that. I said, we've gotta be really aware of our cost per rider. And so in our CEO's bonus structure, it's built in to say, we're looking for this cost per rider. And that, that was our way of being able to say, it's important that we could watch and use our dollars wisely. So I wanted to just say that too, is that for Southwest Transit, we have been very careful about that. And I know that's something council member Grau and I are mindful of. Um, and I know the other cities, Chan Hassen, Eden Prairie, their representatives are as well. Um, so you may see articles and things out there. Also, the green line going into Eden Prairie for light rail is not Southwest Transit, by the way.
That's, yeah.
That's my favorite thing to mention.
Yep. No, that's, that's good. Well, well said. Thank you um, for pointing that out.
Cause if Southwest Transit had, it'd probably be done by now.
We're up here trying to make a lot of friends tonight again.
I don't, I will, I, I echo that. I, I was, I paused when there's, when you opened the topic. I was just looking over, you're like, are you gonna say something? Um, yeah, I, you know, I certainly was aware of Southwest Transit being up here in the council. But in the last, I don't know how many months I've gone to, six months, seven months? I don't know.
Since the beginning of the year.
Yep.
Ten months.
January, ten months, okay. Uh, certainly, you know, been more aware of, of kind of the, the, just the, the ongoings of that situation. And, and again, I have conversations with the people uh, through various concepts. I just, you know, actually had, actually my boss commented that they took Southwest Transit to the Gophers game and it was an awesome experience, right? And like, that doesn't exist. If so, you know, like that experience is much different in a different environment. Um, but again, I, I've mentioned it before and I'll just say it again. I think it's one of those things, it's just easy to take for granted. You drive by it on forty-one, you see the bus. It just, it just happens. I live here, it's always been here. It doesn't happen by accident. A lot of people put time and effort into making sure we're being responsible to get that funding. And, and, and like I said, part of why we're forming some of this conversation is that I think there is a real, a real threat. Now, we'll see where that threat goes, but I think there is some real threat to seeing how that, that could change and that while we've taken it for granted, uh, yeah, will all of a sudden disappear. So, yeah, I think you said it well. Uh, more to come. Uh, but I, I'm excited and very proud to, to put my support behind this resolution. And I also signed a, you know, uh, council member Hatfield and I also signed a document directly from all of us on the commission that was shared. Um, just because again, I think, I don't want people to just take it for granted. Cause there are, I think, the things to me, my kids still talk about, taking the bus to the state football championship game. My kids still talk about that. That was like four, five years ago. Metro Transit ain't sending a bus off just to bring us to Vicki. They just say, that ain't their model, that ain't, and I might even say that's wrong for them, right? That's, that's not their model. But it's right for us.
Yeah.
Yeah. We talked about building community and how important that is to all of us. Transportation is a part of that. It's a part of building community from how we get around. So, yeah. Sorry, we'll get off our soapbox now.
No, I mean, this is all well said. And I think it's important and kind of the atmosphere where things are at. I think it's good that it gets drawn out and talked about, so. But that also leads me to an entertaining motion to approve these consent items. We have a motion from council member Hatfield and a second from council member Grau. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? All right, consent items approved. And then that moves us on to our action items. And we only have one, seven A, a public hearing. Adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven one approving the city's application to Minnesota Department of E- of Employment and Economic Development for the MIF program.
Mayor and councilmembers, I'll turn over to Julie.
I was like, who do I look at? Thank you, mayor and councilmembers.
Marauder Controls is a company that moved to Chaska about a year and a half ago. Many of you may be familiar with them from when they were here last year. They um, they have a, they're a family owned business. They are headquartered in New Jersey. They opened a satellite facility in Chaska. And at that facility, they manufacture small and high-performance motors and other systems and subsystems for the aerospace and defense industries sectors. Well, they are looking to expand their Chaska facility. They want to include rapid prototyping capabilities. What that is, I, it's over my head. But they're, they wanna increase their production capabilities. They wanna build a hundred percent of their motor needs in-house. And they wanna add employees to do that. So they're looking to expand both their space and in, um, increase um, their employees by thirty-five, adding thirty-five new jobs. They are looking to make a capital investment of nearly five million dollars. And to do this, they have requested that the city sponsor an application to deed for their Minnesota investment or MIF funds. The way that fund works, it's kind of, it's a, it's a um, forgivable loan. It kind of works as a grant where the funds would come to us and then we would send them over to Marauder Controls. Um, as part of the application, the city is required to hold a public hearing. And then council is required to adopt a resolution approving that application. So that's what we're requesting that you do tonight. I will say, Representative Marauder Controls Heather Nygaard is here. If you have any questions, feel free to ask either of us. And other than that, I'm happy to take questions.
Does anybody have any questions for, for Julie? Or I, what'd you say?
Heather.
Heather, I'm sorry. I, my ears are getting old tonight.
There's some noise up here that just started right behind.
Um, anybody have any questions for, for either? I, I'll just echo, or I'll just state that I appreciate you being here. I know it was a little bit a longer meeting maybe than what was planned and, and rightfully for a good reason. So, um, but I, I, I appreciate your patience in being here. And for your investment in the community. I mean, thirty-five new jobs, five million dollars, that is nothing to bat an eye at. And we really love knowing that you've, you know, called Chaska your home and, and as a satellite facility. And it's, um, it's working out so well that you're willing to make more of an investment in our community and, and bring these jobs in this opportunity. And that sounds amazing. I would love to see what, uh, what is involved in making a high-performance motor for aerospace. That's, that sounds, sounds fascinating. Uh, but long and short, I, I just wanna say thank you for being here. So.
Well said.
Yeah. Um, with that, I gotta open up a public hearing. So I'm gonna do that at eight oh two P M. And anybody that would like to come forward, do you wanna come forward and say anything publicly on the record? Yeah. Kyle, you wanna say something about it?
We're just looking for someone to actually talk at these public hearings.
Do you need me to restate my name? I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for allowing us to, you know, be a part of the community and have the opportunity to apply for this and everything like that. You know, we've been doing a lot of rapid growth. Um, I also help with some of the scheduling of the interviews and we have many, many more. So yeah, we're trying to bring in more people. And a part of that is also some people relocating to the area as well. So that's all about growth and it's, it's going well. So thank you.
Thank you. I, and again, thank you so much. You are part of the fabric of this community and we appreciate you being here. So. Um, with that being said, uh, I will close this public hearing at eight oh four. Um, and does anybody have any comments or questions up at the council? I would entertain a motion um, to approve the um, MIF application for, um, the city's application for the MIF program. Is it, yeah. I don't have the thing in front of me, but if anybody has.
To approve the public hearing for resolution twenty twenty-five dot seven one.
Thank you. Um, so I have a motion from um, council member Shovlin.
Second.
And a second from council member Benish. Any other discussion? I'll just say thank you, Julie, for uh, your explanation. I always think it's really good to have that um, as part of the meeting to kind of talk about the program. So thank you. You do a good job. Uh, all right. With that, uh, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion approved. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that moves us along on our agenda to bills. Um, does anybody have a question on a bill? If now, speak up. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills.
Motion to approve the bills.
All right. We have a motion from council member Hatfield. And a second from there. Uh, any discussion? Otherwise, roll call, please.
Council member Hatfield?
Yes.
Council member Benish?
Yes.
Council member Shovlin?
Yes.
Council member Grau?
Aye.
Mayor Hubbard?
Aye. All right, bills are paid. All right. That moves us along to other business. Uh, take it away, council member Grau.
Uh, we just met last week, so it feels like a really short turnaround. Um, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. That's, I love, I mean, that's awesome. Yay. All right. Moving along, council member Shovlin.
Actually have nothing to add either.
All right. We're just moving right along.
Keep it going.
Well, I'm very sorry.
So it's always gotta be the.
Sorry about this. I'll be quick. Um, fall and winter are my favorite time. Basically like now to December, the second weekend in December is like my favorite time in Chaska. So um, few things coming up. Another this month, the Katrina Festival, ten twenty-four, Chaska Event Center at six P M. That's a really fun event.
Yeah.
Highly encourage people to go, get to experience that. Um, it's, it's just really cool. Kids will love it. Um, just a good event. And then the next day is the Halloween all day. You can go to the Chaska Commons and enjoy trick or treating up there downtown. I think Chaska Commons is the morning and then it goes to downtown. And then the jamboree at the um, community center. So it's really, you know, a bunch of different entities that made it so you can Halloween all day on ten twenty-five. So it's really, you know, a bunch of different entities that made it so you can Halloween all day on 10/25.
I bought my costume.
So, and you can.
I'm just gonna have to wait and see.
Oh, it could be find the mayor in her costume. Don't tell anyone what it is.
I won't, and I don't think very many people are gonna understand the costume unless you're like a 90's kid, so.
Okay, great. We can't wait. Um, all October, you can bring your yard waste to the Dakota Prairie compost, Dakota Prairie composting site, just on 41, so that's a cool thing. I know personally, for some reason, every time we have a yard waste day, I'm doing something else. So, it's nice that all month long you can go do that, so encourage people to do that. Um, and then, every Saturday, I talked about this last time, sip and shop Saturdays are happening. So go downtown, go to the businesses, there's pop-ups, you can walk around with beer. And that's just really cool. It's a great time of year, I said this last time. I know I just said it a week ago, but you're all gonna listen again. It's a great time to go Christmas shopping and start that, and shop downtown for your gifts. And they just, they're, they all have really cool things, and especially like, they all have really fun things, I know. Like Hayloft does seasonal, so she'll switch from fall to Christmas at some point. You know, Linda's and 501, they have really unique finds that you're gonna go find something, and you're gonna be the only one that gets that thing, because it's all vintage or antique, which is really cool. So, get down there before someone else buys it, I guess is what I'm saying. And then, some other things coming up downtown, I'll just say them all while I'm saying them. Deer Weekend is November 8th. That's always a really fun time downtown. All the ladies, the guys go hunting, all the ladies, we stay back, and you know, some guys too. And go shopping, and have coffee, and lunch at Red Bench, and do all the things, and it's just a good time. And then the tree lighting in Fireman's Park is November 23rd. Small Business Saturday is September, or November 29th, sorry, and Hometown Holiday is December 6th. So don't plan anything, go downtown and have a good time, is what I'm telling everyone. Um, let's see, I think that's it. Next time, I won't have so many cups of coffee before I come here.
Coffee away. I think that's good. It sounds like you might be personally dragging people out of their homes to come downtown and shop.
Yeah, I will find you. I'll bring you downtown, and we'll have a margarita.
Yes, yes. Uh, great report. Elise? Krista?
I believe that.
Krista came with a whole stack of papers and yet he has nothing to say.
Those are from Matt Clark.
I was gonna say, I don't have the sign-offs.
I have a gift from Matt Clark.
Alright, alright.
I have nothing.
Nothing? What about you, Julie? Nothing. Alright, Kyle? I'm just playing. Alright, uh, just, just a couple of things that weren't covered. One, Staff Appreciation Day was super fun, my first time in this role as mayor to run around all the different departments with Elise and Matt and say thank you as sincere appreciation to all of our staff. We have over 150 full-time employees, correct?
About 100, almost 170.
170, and I think we have like over 400 part-time, right? Give or take.
Yeah.
And so that's a lot of folks that work for our community, and they help really do all the odds and ends that make this community great. And so, just a heartfelt appreciation. I know I couldn't say thank you to every single person, but we did a lot.
Me and Elise did.
And what I did as a special and fun thing was, I've collected some different pieces of apparel from doing like Taylor's tries, or buying, you know, merchandise, you know, at the golf store, and, you know, things like that. And so I was changing shirts, and Elise was chauffeuring me around. So, when you see these pictures, which I don't know, will, will these pictures be known outside of? I'll be like, why is Taylor wearing like six different shirts? Were these taken on different days? No, they were all taken with a span of two hours, and it was really fun.
Wardroom changes had no malfunctions?
No, no malfunctions, no. But really great just to catch up with all of the different departments and just really express sincere appreciation to all the hard work. Uh, Chaska Yards had their ribbon cutting last week, and if, you know, for those that aren't aware, Chaska Yards is the redevelopment of the block over on Walnut? Yeah, sorry.
Walnut, yeah.
Walnut and second, kinda Walnut and second, I'm sorry, can I have a hand dinner? Um, and it's, has the historic Ernst House that was re, remodeled and refurbished, refinished, along with the three other homes. And gotta take an opportunity to look through all, most all of the homes that were there on the site, as well as the Ernst House, and it's just so beautiful and just so great to see this block revitalized and be a key site for downtown, and to know the opportunities of affordable housing that will be given, you know, lent to the people to come here and live here, and be able to kind of experience that downtown living. So, it was really nice to see everybody there, different agencies and all the people that participate, so.
I was really impressed too, after Michaela shared it last week, was it last week? Yeah, last week. I went on and looked at the floor plans in the houses, and they're really, they were really nice, so. I'm really impressed with what they did and that somebody now will be able to call that home.
Yeah, gorgeous spaces, so, and it was really great to see all the people come out and really be supportive of that project. Just business owners, other residents, you know, different agencies like the Carver County Development Agency and the county itself and everything, so huge, huge success. And just one event that wasn't on the calendar that I think is worth mentioning is Pizza with a Cop is on October 22nd. I don't know if this is on Facebook, but it's from 5:00 to 7:00, and it's at Red Bench, so just gonna put that out there.
That sounds pretty cool.
So, I mean, I'm still waiting for an opportunity to eat Red Bench pizza. I have not been able to.
I didn't know those were pizza.
It's like very rare.
It's like a pop-up sort of thing?
So, I miss it.
They started it during COVID. I, I remember it's.
I see it like a day or two later than it's announced, and I'm always like, darn it, I miss this.
I've been to breakfast there, and I've been to the prohibition room to, you know, have drinks.
Yeah, their pizza's good.
Oh, Pizza with a Cop is on Facebook.
Is it? Okay.
Yep, this is 22nd from 5:00 to 7:00.
Yep, so just, uh, so just putting it out there, there's an opportunity. Otherwise, we have our next meeting on October 20th?
Yep.
And, uh, that's it. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion from councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second from councilmember Benish. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.